Item thirteen.
Okay, I'd make it item thirteen. I was wondering where I got that from.
I wondered when they wrote them.
Oh.
Robertson, revised short form PCD, file number Z-5699-B, item number thirteen. The request consists of two lots. The northern lot is adjacent to Kavanaugh Boulevard, which is currently zoned R2 single-family with a C1 neighborhood commercial non-conforming status. The Board of Directors approved an ordinance to establish Joseph Short Form PCD for the southern lot on August the third, nineteen ninety-three. The PCD allowed for the placement of Joseph's distinctive floor service at the location with no alternative uses. The Board also approved a waiver of the sidewalk and street improvements to G Street with the same ordinance. On May of two thousand, May seventh, two thousand, a revision to the PCD for the southern lot was approved to allow retail-use kids' stuff clothing store to locate in the building. The applicant is seeking a revision to the PCD to expand the area to include Lot Five and to expand allowable uses for the site to include C1 neighborhood commercial uses for both properties. The properties in question have been established, retail establishments, since at least nineteen ninety-two. The property was purchased by the applicant in December of two thousand and five, and he has spent the last eighteen months remodeling both buildings. Current zoning for the northern lot is R2 with the non-conforming status, and the applicant intends to establish a single zoning for both properties. The intended short-term use is to locate a professional office on the southern lot and lease the northern lot for an appropriate C1 neighborhood commercial use. On Lot Five, the northern lot, the future building designation indicated on the site plan is a portion of the previous building which was removed due to significant water and termite damage. The applicant desires to replace the square footage in the future with new construction. The site plan indicates signage to serve the development, the sign to serve Lot Four. The southern lot is proposed to be a maximum height of four feet and a maximum sign area of forty square feet. Building signage has not been indicated for Lot Four, but staff recommends building signage not exceed signage typically allowed per the zoning ordinance in the Hillcrest Design Overlay District. Building mounted signage is indicated on proposed Lot Five, the northern building. Signage along Spruce Street is proposed with a maximum of three feet and a maximum sign area of thirty-six square feet. The sign along Kavanaugh is proposed with a maximum height of four feet and a maximum sign area of eighty feet. The signage along Spruce Street is proposed as roof-mounted signage and has existed for a number of years. The site plan indicates one onsite parking space. The Hillcrest Design Overlay established parking requirements for the district at fifty percent of the typical required for the zoning ordinance. Based on the typical minimum parking required for a commercial development, eleven spaces would be required. The Hillcrest Overlay allows credits to count for street parking. Based on the applicant's street frontage, he has two-hundred-and-eighty-eight feet of a budding street, which would allow him a total credit of twenty-eight parking spaces. The parking indicated is adequate to meet the standards established by the Hillcrest Design Overlay. Staff is supportive of the request. The applicant is seeking approval to allow C1 neighborhood commercial uses for the site. Presently, the site is a non-conforming commercial use and the allowance of a children's clothing store and a floor shop. The site is located in a commercial area of Hillcrest and the commercial activities to the north and east of the site. G Street to the south starts the residential uses in the neighborhood, and although there is limited onsite parking, the parking is adequate to meet the standards established by the newly adopted Hillcrest Design Overlay District. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues, and staff recommends approval of the request, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions as outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F of the agenda staff report.
Thank you, Mr. James. It's the applicant here. Come on up. State your name and your case.
Good evening. My name's Mark Robertson. I am the property owner. We have spent nearly the last two years rebuilding two buildings that were in pretty deplorable shape when we purchased them. The intent is just to have them have a permanent zoning or combine the zoning to a C1 neighborhood residential appropriate use. And that's really, I'll have to say, I mean, that's, most everyone that's been by has been very supportive. We've, they've watched us work on them for quite a long length of time, and I think we've improved that corner. Commercial is on the other three corners, as mentioned, so I'll reserve the rest of my time. Thanks.
Okay. We also have somebody else, Scott Smith. That's a, he left? Oh, he is.
Not exactly Scott Smith. I'm Hank Bates. Scott Smith is president of the Hillcrest Resident Association, and he was ill tonight, so he did not have the stamina to go for this long meeting. And I'm subbing for him at the last minute here. The Resident Association is supportive of what's before you tonight. As Mr. Robertson said, this is a, was a, this property was not doing well when they purchased it. It is also, I think, a hard-to-develop property. What they've done is refurbished both the larger building and the smaller building. The smaller building's sort of a odd building. It's sort of, I think, neighborhood, it's called the Rock House. It's not actually rock. I think it's some of that old asbestos fake-rock stuff, but it's got a certain charm to it, but it is not exactly, I don't think, a very easy building to commercially develop. They've done a yeoman's job of preserving that and turning it into a building that they could develop. It's our understanding that there's some concern among the neighbors that live nearby that if a restaurant or some type of commercial establishment that had a large dumpster could, you know, could attract rats or nuisance or something like that. Our thought is that no restrictions should be put on it, limited to that because of the nature of the property. I think it's, it's, it needs to be, to have the flexibility so that it can be viable. To the extent, I think the risks of it being a nuisance to the neighbors is low, and to the extent that risk exists, it can be dealt with through code enforcement or the Health Department, et cetera, if you, if you indeed at some point had an irresponsible owner or operator. However, there's no indication that the current owner would be irresponsible. So, in summary, the Resident Association is supportive of this and hope you all will support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I only have one card in opposition. That's Misa Boon.
I have some pictures. I don't know if I can give them to you. Those just show the proximity of our home to the property that's up on the board. We're not opposing that this be changed to commercial. Obviously, it's been commercial, and it's always been retail, quiet commercial, which is great. We have never had a problem with the construction for the past two years directly next to our home. We told Mr. Robertson two years ago before he purchased the home, or the property, that we would be opposed to any type of food business if it involved a grease trap or a dumpster due to the fact that our backyard and side of our house are right there, and a dumpster definitely with code enforcement, no matter what, you're going to have rats, bugs, rodents, roaches, mosquitoes, and those will all be right there on our property. We also have a signed list of the neighbors that live directly around the home, I mean, the property, that also oppose the grease trap and the dumpster. We don't think that Mr. Robertson will have a problem renting the space for retail or office or salon or anything like that. We also own a property in Hillcrest and run a business, and we have a leased space downstairs that we just rented out. It took us about a week and a half. There's lots of restaurants already in Hillcrest, and we just don't feel that we really need that right on our property. Our property line is right there. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have any questions or comments? Commissioner Rektor?
Of course, you get the, but let me ask the staff. Is a restaurant allowed in C1?
Yes, a sit-down restaurant is permitted. There are no allowed drive-through for, no drive-through.
No drive-through, but a sit-down restaurant. So, are you willing to take that out of your uses?
No, I'm not. And I would disagree with, before we bought the property, before I ever closed on the property, I did go around to the surrounding neighbors and ask if they would support or be opposed to me having a business zoning there. And only last summer, after we'd already closed, begun the work, did Emeshaun and Colin express concern over a food-type business on that property, but we were already several months into, into the process. I don't want to be limited in what I could or potentially use the property for. I've invested a lot of time and a lot of money into the property. I think the request is reasonable and fair. We're going to do what we can to make it reasonable for them. We live three blocks from the property as well. We're part of the neighborhood. I think it's reasonable. I think staff thinks it's reasonable. I conversed with them prior to going through all of this. I conversed with the Residents Association, so I feel like, you know, we've done what we needed to do to make sure that we had a minimal risk, and I think we've got a fair request, so.
How are you going to handle trash?
Pardon me?
How are you going to handle trash?
We have a location, the only place we can locate it is along Kavanaugh due to the tree cover and everything else. I mean, we could shift that within, you know, several feet one way or the other prior to constructing, you know, a pad for that. You know, it may not need to be a dumpster. I don't know what the use is going to be at this point, but we needed to preserve space for trash. I can't have a property that has no trash facility, so.
Do you franchise that area from the city? Is that, am I?
We're going to have to work with Mr. Robertson on the location of the dumpster because right now it is shown within right-of-way, and.
Well, it really isn't anywhere to put a dumpster on the property that.
Due to the grades and the tree cover, there's no other place other than along Kavanaugh that I can see. I mean, I've spent two years looking at this, so.
That could be an issue.
So, I mean, I think, I mean, how are you going to handle a dumpster there without getting some sort of franchise? Or what are we passing here? I mean, not to even talk about a grease trap yet, but.
Not to jump in, but I'd be seriously surprised if the Hillcrest Resident Association knew we were talking about putting a dumpster on Kavanaugh, facing on Kavanaugh. And that's not to disparage your development, and as you recall, I stopped by and talked to you, and it's a wonderful deal. You salvaged a eyesore. And I'd also, and I don't know that this makes any difference, but our drawing showing the building is thirty-one hundred square feet, and it's, I would say.
That's, that's the lot size.
Well, it shows the small, the rock building is thirty-one ninety-one square feet, and is that over eight hundreds?
No, it's eight hundred square feet is the building. The lot size is thirty-one ninety-four square feet. The second line's an existing building to remain. The lower lot is, I can't read it from here, but it's thirty-two forty-seven is the square footage of the lot. I mean, so the total lot space is seventy-five hundred. You can do the math, but.
How big are the buildings?
Eight hundred square feet and roughly eighteen hundred square feet, so.
And I don't have a grease trap. I've been around grease traps, and that, they're not as onerous, you know, they're underground. That one's an above-ground grease trap, but it'd be a receptacle. And as a practical matter, you're not going to be able to get a restaurant eight hundred square foot.
Well, I disagree with you, but, I mean, I've been to a lot of them all over the United States in that size, so.
Well, Leo's is an anomaly. I mean, that's.
Leo's is not the only small restaurant, but again, I'm not wanting to restrict my potential use of the property. If it's within a neighborhood, C1 use. I think that's, that's reasonable. I don't think it's a unreasonable request at all.
Commissioner Nunley?
What type of, what type of hours are you talking about operating in?
Well, I'm willing to discuss that. I can't see it being open anything later than midnight there, but probably, again, I don't know what the use is. I'm not, before you asking to put a business in there, I mean, I'm not, I don't have a business to put in it at this point.
But you want to, you want to keep it as flexible as possible for whoever might want to.
Sure. And I'm not going to want someone that's there that's going to run all night. I mean, my office, you know, will be next door. Like I said, I live in the neighborhood. I'm part of the neighborhood. I want something that's going to be an amenity to the neighborhood.
So, your office is in the lower bit of the?
Yes.
I do have a question of staff. If we approve this, are we actually approving them putting a dumpster on the right-of-way there? We are, we are approving that.
That's part of the site plan, but staff cannot support the placement of that on the street right-of-way.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's not a desirable situation at all.
So, is staff withdrawing its support for this applicant?
I have a real hard time with a dumpster there.
If that's the location, yes, we're going to have to recommend denial and change our recommendation.
Well, it should have been nice to have that before, you know, came in here tonight after being told I had support from the staff. I mean, I submitted this weeks ago. I've been waiting for months to get this taken care of.
Well, as you've heard tonight, there are lots of issues that come up in these meetings that aren't anticipated.
Yeah, that's why we have these meetings.
So, don't get offended. It's an issue we've got to deal with.
Well, I can take the trees out, and we can, we can push a pad back. I mean, there's six, seven feet of grade change off Kavanaugh onto the actual property line.
And don't think that's a good solution. I agree with you. Coming off of G Street's not a good solution. You couldn't get a truck in there to get it a dumpster.
You can't get it off G. You can't get into it off Spruce.
I think what you're saying is you can't put a dumpster in there, but I, you know, there may be some other solution.
Well, you could do rolling cans. I mean, which I'm not opposed to that. I'm just trying to show a location for trash to be placed. It doesn't necessarily have to be a, you know, five cubic yard or ten cubic yard, you know, dumpster in there, but I was asked to show a trash location, and it's the only place I've got to put it that you could get it out to the street.
This is a question for staff. Would staff are comfortable, if we approve this, you are working this issue out? I mean, no?
Right.
I mean, you, it was only consent approval, and you support everything but the dumpster.
We've been, I mean, we think a possible solution would be that it could be serviced from G Street by rolling it out to the street. I mean, that does happen in other locations.
You need to look at the grades there in terms of trying to roll a full dumpster. There's a significant grade change from G Street up to the property line. I mean, up onto the property, there's about three feet of grade change along G Street.
Down Z.
It starts at about twelve inches at the corner, and there's about three feet at the parking place back where the, where the location is that you talk about. And I, and just, you know, the garbage trucks coming down G Street taking care of the little green cans have a hard enough time. I don't know why you'd want to put a dumpster there.
Mr. Myers, you have a question?
Well, there's other, a private hauler could, you know, possibly place receptacles in the back and then use a private hauler to take them out. I know that would be a more expensive alternative, but just trying to get it off of the Kavanaugh.
Well, you've got overhead power, you've got a grade, you couldn't go in there and pick up a dumpster and lift it. You know, a private hauler couldn't lift and load a dumpster off the backside.
Well, then, a restaurant may not be an appropriate, I mean, a, 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 a office would only generate a few, you know, think of your own office. I'd be surprised if you generate more than a bag or two of trash even with four people there, you know, in a week. I mean, just something that's a less generator of trash.
Well.
And I think, and really what we're looking at is a, is a, is a restaurant there. And I, and of course, I know you and I have agreed to disagree, maybe a coffee shop, you know, I mean, which you'd still have to have a grease trap, but.
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, Crush Wine Bar doesn't have a grease trap.
Well, that's, good luck fighting that with the Health Department.
Well, I mean, there's ways to do it. I mean, and I don't think that's.
There are ways to do that.
There's ways around that, so I don't think that's what's the discussion here.
Izzy's out there wouldn't, wouldn't serve french fries, you know, because they didn't want to put in a, you know, that was the issue there.
Well, go talk to the people at Wastewater.
Well, I, you know, how about, how about we, you could approve this without, without a dumpster and a grease trap, and if he gets a development that requires such a thing, he can come back in here, talk about us, about the specifics of that. If he doesn't, and he can handle it without that, then great, go do it. But if, if.
I can, I can do it with the dumpster. I don't think I want to agree to the grease trap, though. Why would I have to agree to the grease trap?
You don't have to agree to anything.
Well, sure.
You don't have to agree to a thing. I mean, I'm just throwing out a possible compromise here. I mean, it's.
I mean, you could do a coffee shop or a tea shop or something like that and work out of small green garbage cans. I mean, so, I mean, that would allow a food-type business.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. Unless it required such a thing as a dumpster or a grease trap, then you can just go do what you want. If it did require that, then you've got to come up with, you know, specifics about where this is going to happen, and how it's going to happen.
I think the big heartburn we have right now is the dumpster, because you're going to have to come back at later point, either put a dumpster in, or when you get your food permit for, you're going to have to come up with something at that point anyway. So, if, I think if you were just to remove the, I can't speak for you, I can't make a suggestion or anything for you, but I think it'd be, it'd be very useful if that dumpster wasn't sitting out on Kavanaugh.
Well, it would be helpful if you guys would all go out and look at the property and tell me where in the hell I can put it.
That's not our job on this.
I walk by every morning.
Well, I think it is. I mean, you're, you're telling me what I can and can't do without actually visiting the property and seeing the constraints that I have. And believe me, I have been very reasonable and sensitive to this.
Most of us are very familiar with that area.
I've lived in that neighborhood for thirty years, you know. I mean, I'm very familiar with that. I've walked by it many times. I understand what your problem is. But the city, and I don't think, I'm not sure anybody's going to support a dumpster out in the right-of-way in Kavanaugh.
Chairman Taylor?
Commissioner Yates?
Could I take a moment here, let Mark ponder this dumpster and recognize the gentleman in the audience that had his hand up, that spoke to, that had, yeah, you, next-door neighbor. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't jot down the name, so if you.
I just wanted to mention that, my name's Colin Boon. I'm Emeshaun's husband. That dumpster is eight feet away from my son's swing set, just on the other side of that tree. Eight feet. You know, that's ridiculous. And if you move that dumpster down to the opening between those trees on G Street, I have a neighbor that's here that's about to speak that I'm positive would oppose it also. So, I'm not alone. I'm alone right now because we're the most direct neighbor. That's all I wanted to say.
And you oppose the dumpster? What about, what's your, what are your, your, what's your problem with the grease trap?
Well, that they smell. We gave you the picture of the one. That's at Leo's, which is across the street.
Now, there's a distinction between a grease trap. A grease trap is underground, and it's like a septic tank. That is a grease receptacle where they run fryers and stuff, and that may be something else that we want to do is make sure it's not a above-ground grease receptacle. A grease trap is buried under the ground. It's a septic tank-type device. It just separates it periodically, and they got to.
Or smelt or anything.
Yeah, it's not too bad. Now, we, you know, we may want to address above-ground. Well, no, it's not. I mean, just, you know.
Well, that, the one I gave you the picture of is at Leo's, which is across the street. And we've, we've never opposed him talking to Leo's and renting half of their dumpsters and renting half of their grease receptacle and doing it that way. I think he could do it that way, but he doesn't want to do it that way. And another thing is, you know, I don't want a wine bar open till midnight. I sleep thirty feet away. I don't want it open till midnight, especially with the dumpsters where they're pouring all their wine bottles in there at night. I don't even want one, but I'm willing to, you know, compromise. No dumpster and no grease trap on the property.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure you can fit a square peg into a round hole, and I just assume we have a motion.
I'm waiting for a motion.
Can I make one more point of clarification?
I mean, appears that the dumpster's on the side, sitting on the sidewalk, which it's not. So, I mean, I don't know if that helps at all, but I'm willing to move or work with the garbage issue until we get a tenant in there. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. We've got to find a place to put the garbage.
Are you willing to make an arrangement for an off-site trash arrangement? Lease a space with?
So, I'm going to have to tell a tenant they're going to have to carry it somewhere.
I'm asking you, if you're willing. You don't have to do anything, Mark. I'm just asking, are you willing to explore an off-site arrangement?
Well, if I have a tenant that's willing to carry it, I mean, if you were going to lease that space, would you want to have to carry it to some business location?
You've offered to let them roll it out to the street. They can roll it across the street.
I, I think the, I think, I think the suggestion that Commissioner Rektor made was probably the best, and if the applicant isn't willing to do that, I'm ready to vote.
We got one more card in opposition. Late, latecomer, Randy Thurman?
My name's Randy Thurman. I live 722 North Spruce, which is just this side of G, the other side of G. And I'm, I'm not here to speak against the commercial zoning. I think Mark and his wife done an outstanding job in salvaging two really decrepit old buildings. I lived there in G prior to Colin, prior to Mark. And all three of those buildings were owned by the same individual who simply did not have the resources to keep them up. They fell in a state of disrepair. The only thing I'm opposed to is you all sort of, it sounded to me like you're sort of beginning to dictate a location for the dumpster. And, and, you know, Mark is right. There is no way you can pull it down the driveway because of the decline on that driveway going out to G is such, I have a car that is on my private parking pad just at the end of that driveway on the other side. That street is too narrow as it is. There's no parking on my side of the street because a previous neighbor had a constant twenty-four-seven yard sale going on, and people were tearing up my yard, going to her yard sale every day of the week. So, I just would urge you to be calm. I would urge you to give Mark some flexibility to work some issues out. He doesn't know who's going to move in there. We don't either. But whatever is going to go in there, pretty much is going to be an improvement of what we had over there the previous five years.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I want to comment that what I was proposing, I think, is the most flexible deal, but if the applicant doesn't want to do that, well, then.
I mean, if that's what you want, I'll wait and come back when we've got a business in there, but it's.
It's something.
And you know, as, you know as well as I know, tying this up, bringing it through another three-month process to get it through here means I'm going to have to wait, you know, for that person to want to lease it. You know, they're, it's.
Well, let me, let me, let me say this, okay? If, if you have to put the dumpster on-site because you're required by a tenant, at this point, the staff is not even supporting what you're applying for, okay? I mean, that's where we are. They're not supporting that. Okay? So, this is a problem that is not solved.
Yeah, I'm a little blindsided by that. I understand.
Well, I understand, and I've been in your shoes. I mean, I've showed up down here to a hearing and had somebody show up with an issue I never heard of. Okay? And it frosted you. I've been there. I know, okay? But that's the reality, okay? So, I, what I'm trying to do is work out a situation where if it's necessary that you have a trash, a dumpster on-site, that requires you to come down here. If you can work it out any other way, you don't have to come back down here.
Okay.
Well, that will require is a amendment on your part to the application or remove the dumpster from your site plan?
Okay, I'll remove the dumpster.
And other, the grease thing, I mean, you put it in the ground and have one of those, not one of these.
No, no above-ground grease receptacle.
That seems acceptable. How do you know an above-ground was, was acceptable anymore?
Well, it's, it's, again, it's just a recept, like when you change out your fryer oil, they dump it in there, the grease trap.
He's already approved. He's already agreed.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we're ready for a motion. Nope.
Does staff, does staff need to state now that they support you?
And, and Mark, so what you are amending your application to is, and if you need a grease trap there, it's going to be underground, and you're removing the dumpster from the current location, and if you need a dumpster, then you will come back to, to this body. Is that right?
Yeah, my first site plan didn't have a dumpster on, and I was asked to show one, so I mean, I didn't have.